Council come to order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and a treaty for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, could you please call roll?
DeYoung.
Here.
DeAnstruck.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Spore.
Here.
Andrew Raynor Force is absent and Carl Sturman may be joining vehicle later, he's not on right now.
All right, can I get motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Vance for Spore, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call roll.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
It's Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. This time we have an opportunity for a public forum, anyone wishing to address council regarding any agenda item, please step forward, microphone, state your name and address and your comments to three minutes.
My name is Pastor Michael Shover with Christ Redeemer Church, I live at 1000 Sunset Avenue. I wanted to talk about the zoning ordinance, the language in the zoning ordinance. The reason that we have this issue is because the ACLU wrote a letter to you in order to try to get you to back down off of the language away from male and female impersonators. They did this precisely so that there can be drag shows here in this town. That is the stated purpose of their letter that they sent to you, and in your proposed language, there is nothing stating that drag shows would be restricted. And so, I urge you to, in fact, keep the original language, to not go and vote on this new ordinance, and if you do go ahead with a new ordinance, to actually, instead of spending millions of dollars on a recreational facility that nobody wants, why don't you spend the money on a good lawyer that can tell the ACLU to go pound sand, and then you all start promoting good and godly laws in our town? Because I guarantee you, as soon as we pass this ordinance, and I know you all want to do it tonight because you want to pass it, you want to bypass the second, the third reading, and you want to vote on it tonight, and I urge you not to do that, because I know that as soon as it happens, within six months, you're going to have drag shows in this town. If you care at all about what the people of this town think, you'll actually not hold a vote tonight, you'll wait until we vote on a new election tomorrow, and hopefully we get new people in here who care about the spiritual health of this town. And so I will just conclude with Isaiah, chapter 10. Woe to those who decree iniquitous decrees and the writers who keep writing oppression. If you allow this to pass, if you pass this, you're allowing iniquity and you are oppressing the people with ungodliness in this town. So please do not do it, take my word seriously, because it will have great repercussions here in this town, and you will be the ones to blame.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Spore, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, new special Class C retail alcohol license for R&amp;R White House Enterprises LLC doing business as the Winehouse, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item, and for those in attendance and those watching it online on telefiber, I'd like to direct your attention to the big board for a brief presentation on this item. As Mayor Dwork stated, this application comes to us tonight from R&amp;R White House Enterprises. They are doing business as the Winehouse, and they are located at 615 Franklin Street. Now, the license that they're applying for is a new Class C retail alcohol license that would be effective on January 1st of 2024, and it's for 12 months on it. It is important to note, consideration of the side of the application has been filed online with the state of Iowa, and we're currently waiting the pending home shop certification. So with that, we are recommending a conditional approval of tonight's application. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes staff's presentation.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Vance for Spore, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call roll.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6632, entitled Resolution Approving Amending and Restated Agreement Under Iowa Code Chapter 20AD Between Waverly Communications Utility, the Municipal Communications Utility of the City of Cedar Falls, the Communication Utility of Bellevue, Iowa, Indianola Municipal Utilities, Vinton Municipal Communications Utility, City of Pella Municipal Telecommunications Utility, New Hampton Municipal Communications Utility and Waterloo Telecommunications Utility Providing for Joint Ownership and Use of Certain Facilities and Related Matters, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item, and leading off the presentation tonight, we have two resolutions on this item, and they're both somewhat similar related. Two resolutions, one presentation. So first of all, as far as the definition is concerned, both of these agreements relate to what's called a video head-in, and for those of you that aren't aware, we actually have an agreement with seven other municipal utilities that we share head-end services. And what head-end is, is somewhat functions such as a central office and a facility that receives television signals from satellites and distributes them over an internet protocol system so that we can watch cable and television on the telefiber, that's the purpose of our agreement. We originally entered into these agreements in 2020. It is important to note that the head-end, in this case, is managed by the Cedar Falls Municipal Utility. Now, the reason we are considering an amendment this evening is the city of Waterloo has recently formed a telecommunications utility, and they're proposing to buy into our system and share in the cost of the system, and if this were approved by all the member entities, we would actually have eight municipal telecommunications utilities that would share head-end services with this. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, the first resolution that we have is actually our maintenance and operational agreement. Now, the key changes that we do have up here on board is we're adding Waterloo Telecommunications Utility as a member utility. Big item for the city of LA is our cost allocation, as far as the overall expenses for the head-end would actually increase from 11.64% to 6.7%. And the term of the contract would be extended out to October 2026, currently is set to expire in August of 2025. Now, the second item that we have is purely financial, and this deals with the buy-in fee for the Waterloo Municipal Telecommunications Utility. Our share of the buy-in fee is totaled just shy of $49,000. So with that, Mr. Mayor, it is important to note that the city attorney has reviewed both of these items, and staff is recommending approval this evening.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Hopkins, Spore, any discussion or questions?
I'm just curious on that percentage decrease, is that just on a entity per entity basis, or is it taking into account the population? Waterloo is a pretty big town, you know, compared to Pella, and their usage would be greater than us, I would think.
Let's determine, our percentage decrease is actually based on the number of properties passed in your community, and for Pella, we're just over 4,900 properties passed in our community, and so each entity does an independent count on its certified, those properties on it, and that's how our percentage is calculated. As you can see up here, that's a pretty big decrease that we have overall for our cost allocation on it, so as well, so that takes into account the large city and the city of Waterloo coming into the entity, or into partnership, rather.
Obviously a popular thing, you know, have any other communities wanting in?
There's a lot, actually, there's quite a few, there's a number of cities now that are contemplating, starting in municipal telecommunications utilities, I believe in Iowa with Waterloo and Fort Dodge, we may be up to around 27 cities in Iowa that operate a municipal telecommunications utility, but more contemplating it.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll vote on the motion, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6632, which is already mentioned in the presentation, I just have to read the whole thing again. Resolution approving agreement between the Municipal Communications Utility of the City of Cedar Falls, Waverly Communications Utility, the Communications Utility of Bellevue, Iowa Indianola Municipal Utilities, Vinton Municipal Communications Utility, City of Pella Municipal Telecommunications Utility, New Hampton Municipal Communications Utility and Waterloo Telecommunications Utility Regarding Financial Arrangements. I get motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Hopkins, Spore, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy?
We take a question from the audience on that?
What's that?
Will you take a question from the audience?
Not typically, no.
Okay.
All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy? I'm sorry, Mandy, please call roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6633, entitled Resolution Authorizing Submission of an Application for the Enhance Iowa Grant for the Pella Rec Center Project, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item, and once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board. As Mayor Dwork stated, with this resolution, we would authorize staff to submit an application, a grant application to Enhance Iowa, an amount of $1 million for the city's proposed indoor recreation center. And so authorization is one aspect of this resolution, the second item is to help define or the resolution is intended on defining the city's local match for the Enhance Iowa Grant. Now, a little bit of background on this, in 2022, actually in the spring of 2022, the council did approve or intended, approved its intentions to proceed on a $45 million long-term facilities plan that included the indoor recreation center, the community center, and the University Street extension with this. Now, as a part of the plan, the city identified roughly $22 million in city funds that we would be contributing to the project, and the intention was stated, or the goal stated, to raise an additional 23 million. Now, out of the city's $22 million, we had at the time, proposed local auction sales and services tax bond of $17 million and cash contributions of $5 million for our 22 million. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as determining the local match, we're really focused on the $22 million or the city's contribution for, and what we're proposing on this is to actually, with the $22 million, is to take the base amount for the community center, subtract that amount out, and the proposed match in this case would be 16.5 million for the indoor recreation center. Once again, this is for grant basis for the Enhance Iowa Grant that we're planning on submitting an application on. The reason why we are talking about it in the form of a resolution is the application is actually due on November 15th, and we have to have a resolution that would accompany this. So with it again, with the grant application to be at 16 and a half million dollars would be the intention, and it is subject to financing and council proceeding with the construction contract for the proposed indoor recreation centers. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes the staff presentation, be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can you get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Vance for Spore, any discussion, questions? So the community center funds don't go away, they just get backed out of this calculation?
Yeah. This is for the intention of the Enhance Iowa Grant, and our thoughts are, is with Enhance Iowa, we're focused solely on the city's contribution, which is currently at $22 million, and in making this calculation, we subtracting off the base amount for the community center, so of the 22 million, we're saying is 16 and a half million is the proposed, is the proposed indoor recreation center, and 5 and a half million would be the city's community center project.
So to qualify for the grant, we have to show city's contribution, which I think it only needs to be in reality, what, $25,000 or something?
That's a very good point, Mayor, but one of the key items that we also have is to qualify and apply to the grant, you have to at least show that you've raised at least 65% of the project funding with it as well. So we're above that for the Enhance Iowa, and that's why it's important that we identify this amount.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll vote on the motion, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call roll.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, ordinance number 1033, entitled Anomalous Amending the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by amending section 165.24 for the purpose of revising the definition of an adult cabaret, this is the second reading, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item, as Mayor Dwork stated, we have proposed second reading on a zoning text amendment, and in this particular case, what's being changed, what's supposed to be changed is the zoning definition of adult cabaret. It is important to know when we talk about adult cabaret, it is regulated as an adult entertainment business under the city zoning code, under that zoning code, adult entertainment businesses are allowed in industrial zoning districts, so this would be our M1 district and also our M2 districts, so the limited light industrial, heavy industrial zoning districts. Now, when we talk about adult cabaret, again, here, the current definition identifies, and this is the concern of legal counsel, it identifies individuals on here as well. What's being proposed is to change the definition to activities, which we have up here that are identified in 1 and 2 on this, and again, this ordinance was brought to our attention by the legal counsel is recommending proceeding with the ordinance that is considered this evening, so let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, staff's understanding that the legal counsel does have some concerns about enforcing this ordinance because of the current ordinance, when it relates to adult cabaret focuses on identifying individuals rather than activities as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, the city attorney once again is recommending approval of the ordinance, which would update the definition of the adult cabaret. It is important to note that the city's planning a zoning commission to manually approve the ordinance at their September 25th meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Hopkins, Spore, any discussion? Questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Abstract of Bills number 2138, motion?
Woe to those who pass iniquitous decrees.
Can we remove some of these people that don't have the decency to?
Our ancestors are ashamed of you.
Can, can we have these guys removed, please? We resort to throwing paper wads. Wow. Okay, can I have a motion for approval of the Abstract of Bills of 2138?
So moved.
Support.
Vance for DeYoung. Any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call roll.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member have any other business you'd like to address tonight? Okay, any member of the public have any other business that needs to be addressed? If so, please step forward, microphone, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Hi, I'm Cindy Atkins, I live at 1332 Booth Street, and I am the executive director of the Pella Opera House, which is at 611 Franklin Street downtown. I just wanted to come and say thank you to the council for your earlier suggestion to the, our direction to the, to Jeanette, to go back and revise our sound policy that was being developed to use the downtown sound. As someone in the downtown area, we very much want the opportunity to be able to use that sound to, as Jeanette put it, a revised policy, be able to enhance the ambience of the downtown area, especially for our shoppers and things. As that amended policy comes before you today, one of the things I would ask you to still take a look at in this policy is that it states that the city will do this ambient sound in the downtown area, but only from June 1st through December 26th, which I just want to point out to you, because one of the realities of our downtown area, especially as we have tulip time in early May, is two weeks before, or however long the weather is beautiful before tulip time, as well as those weeks after tulip time, we have so many people downtown, and that continuing music in that downtown area really does enhance their experience. So I would look to encourage you to extend that date earlier to the 1st of April, or to even make it available for weekends in January, February, and March, that the downtown, Pella Historic Downtown Retail Group or Pace Plans events that might be going on in the downtown area to allow music those weekends as well, to, again, just to enhance that downtown area for people who are out there shopping. So thank you for listening, I appreciate your time.
Anyone else?
Anna Rupert, 1104 P Street. The Marion County Express will be publishing an article about keeping chickens in Pella, comes out this Friday, I was supposed to plug to read it. The article brought up some good questions, so I thought I'd just play devil's advocate and talk for a moment about one of those questions, which was, why would people be opposed to this passing? Since no one has spoken publicly against the prospect of backyard hens in Pella, I thought I'd just share some of the common complaints most people have, which involve noise and sanitation. These are valid concerns that any neighbor should have, so they are not to be dismissed lightly. However, a little information can go a long way in sorting myth from fact. A lot of us urban folks have not grown up around chickens, so it's easy to assume things. For instance, people often think that you need a rooster in order to get eggs, when in reality, hens, the females lay eggs regardless. A rooster will only fertilize the egg, which then goes on to hatch a baby chick, and we don't eat the fertilized eggs, only the unfertilized eggs. Roosters are also mean and noisy, and they crow throughout the day. Compare that to hens, who at their loudest are about as noisy as normal human conversation. Crying babies, barking dogs, lawnmowers, and car traffic are all notably louder. It's also worth pointing out that some hens, not all of them, make the most noise when they are laying, which only lasts for about five minutes in the morning, when most people have already gone to work. So another complaint that people have is waste and odor, but it's worth noting that a 40-pound dog generates more waste than 10 chickens. Chicken waste is also highly valuable as a nitrogen-rich fertilizer necessary for building healthy topsoil. So instead of going into the landfill like other pet waste, it has the potential to be composted. Lastly, there's a concern about chickens attracting predators, pests, and rodents. The thing to realize is that these vermin and predators already exist in the urban environment, and they're attracted to things like bird feeders, pet food, bird baths, and ponds. Proper animal husbandry and coop management, including food storage, are essential when caring for any animal, and not to be a requirement for keeping urban chickens. More rich chickens can actually help control pests in the backyard by eating ticks, mosquitoes, crickets, fleas, stink bugs, et cetera. Lastly, when I met with the zoning department, they brought up the idea that urban chickens make much more sense in a city like Ankeny or Des Moines, that's much more developed and farther removed from agriculture than Pella. You can drive 15 minutes to a farm to get fresh eggs around here. Plus, chickens are a lot of mess and work to keep in your backyard. At first I thought, oh, that's a really valid point, but then, the more I thought about it, the more I realized the value of something is not determined by its proximity, labor, or how dirty you get while doing it. In fact, there are many things in life of extreme value that are messy and work. Farming in general is hard, dirty work. Yet who would say farming isn't valuable and worth cultivating? We don't grow gardens because they're easy, we grow them for the rich food they provide. Children are incredibly messy and exhausting. People don't have children because they enjoy cleaning and being tired. No, we have children because they enrich our lives, and if we raise them right, they will make this world a better place. So perhaps backyard hens are the same. Their value outweighs the effort and not to be an option for those willing. Thank you.
Time myself this time, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I did a good job.
All right. Good evening. At the last council meeting, I handed six documents out. The approved Ankeny ordinance regarding urban chickens with highlighting, an article titled, "How Much Room Do Chickens Need?", a two-page document containing six single-family lots, a 70-page query from the Marion County Census Office showing total amount of single-family dwellings within Pella city limits under and over a quarter of an acre, the city's list of permit fees, and a large compilation of omelet coop photos, which is the coop that I have, it says $1,600 coop, and it's completely hygienic, it has a pull-out tray, and it's easier than dogs, cats, all of that. Tonight, I would like to discuss the quarter acre requirement in the Ankeny ordinance. I feel this is important because our zoning department has proposed this document to our council as a baseline. Our city has a total of 3,323 single-family homes, of those, 1,605 have under a quarter of an acre lot size, and 1,718 have a quarter of an acre or more. If Pella adopts the quarter acre rule, almost 50% of our residents would be automatically excluded. The reason I gave you each a two-page document that shows multiple lots in Pella is to show you that a quarter of an acre lot does not mean anything. I have .23 acres or 10,018 square feet. My lot has more space for chickens than a neighbor's that has .44 acre, which is over in Stony, Stony Creek, Mr. Hopkins, what, Shady Creek? Shady Creek? Okay. So over there, so .44 of an acre, which is almost double my lot size, because I have a split level floor plan and no outbuildings. In the document I gave you, I show my lot with .23, two neighbors' lots in the community next to us with .44 and .77, which is all timber, so my backyard is much larger, and three of my neighbor's lots with exactly the same size lot of .24 of an acre. Two of them would have enough room for chickens, but the third has no backyard, all the same lot size. Anna did a presentation on the space required to keep urban chickens. I provided an article at the last meeting about space requirements for free-range chickens. If a chicken is in their coop just to sleep, or when it's cold, they only need a few square foot each, in fact, it's actually desirable so that it stays warm. You don't want a huge coop. For free-ranging, they require about 25 square foot each. For six chickens, 200 to 300 square foot is enough room. I ask you to look at the lots I've provided you, and think about the driveways, the setback, the pools, outbuildings, et cetera, and considering the adoption of the ordinance for our city, please do not exclude 50% of our city due to lot sizes, and instead consider a minimum amount of square footage per chicken based on the data that's been provided to you. I implore you to look at the research that Anna and I have already given. We are not Ankeny, we are Pella, we come from Ag, we embrace Ag, and are surrounded by it. And I brought a...
I think your three minutes are up.
258. I did bring an egg carton to show you, it's an industrial based on at Walmart, and it is called Happy Egg. Industrial corporation that's actually based in the Midwest.
Time's up, thank you.
Eight acres. That's all I'm gonna say.
Anyone else?
John Illinois, 1510 Broadway Street. Looking back over the years, I miss something here preceding the Veterans Day. I can remember retired Minister Laverne Hill opening with prayer at a council meeting prior to the Veterans Day. I also miss the character counts that we had under the late Dobinecker timeframe, that was very important. What does the "no" mean on the library vote issue? I mean, we're not tearing it down, are we? When it says, "Save the library"? What does that mean? Okay. I've heard in the past that people running for council, they come back because Pella's a safe place with Christian values. How can this be with a type of material proposed to be readily available throughout the library for all ages? If I were employed by the city and I had that material on my desktop of my computer or on books laying on my desk, would I be fired? Would you read this material to your young teenage children, or better yet, put it in your church library? The Bible states that those in authority are held to a higher level of accountability than those being led. I might suggest when using the Lord's Prayer, when it says, "Lead us not into temptation", what in the world are we doing? How dare we pray the Lord's Prayer? The thing that concerns me most about all of this, folks, I'm not your enemy. The Bible said we are to Admoni- said we are to admonish one another in love. The thing that concerns me, what is my background check going to be when the Lord calls me home? And what is our background check going to say? What have we done? Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we're going to move into adjourn to a policy and planning to discuss revised downtown sound system use agreement. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'm actually going to turn it forward to our Community Services Director, Jeanette Bond, to walk us through this and talk about the proposed policy. So Jeanette, go right ahead.
Joy doesn't like it when I say, "is this on," so I'm not going to say test instead. Okay, so tonight, we're revisiting the downtown sound system drafted agreement, so we had some changes that were requested from council at the last meeting, so this is kind of a second go-around based on some of those comments. So the revised agreement includes, if you had twenty-five dollars per day, public use is limited to the speakers on the north and south side of the tulip park, available only with a special event permit. So that would be any of your Thursdays in Pella's or fashion shows, those types of events. Events broadcasting copyrighted music must also have a current license of your performer going on there, and you're going to play copyrighted music, you still do need to have the proper licensing. And then just prior to that, who's ever going to be using the system needs to receive training. And then, the system has been used in the past for broadcasting music downtown. There really hasn't been any guidelines for that type of use, so basically, music selections and the times that the music was being played was decided by whatever individual was accessing the system. So in lieu of that, we are recommending that the city manage that portion of the system. And our recommendations are, between June first and December twenty-sixth, music will be provided in zones one and six, and that's the two-block stretch of Franklin Street. Thursdays through Saturdays, ten a.m. to seven p.m. Staff then, or the city would hold a music license or licenses. I'm looking at like a Pandora business license, because then they hold all the licenses and have the most coverage, so that's just the best way for us to go. We would have council approve allowable gender music playlists. All of these types of services have playlists that you can select from, and then city staff would be responsible for system operation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Dr. Carlstone has joy, and he's on the phone.
I guess my question is, why not year-round? Why June first to December twenty-sixth?
When picking those dates, I was basically looking at when you would typically see the most people outside in our community for different events. And then, June first, I went with that date because tulip time event will use that system, and it will need to be set up for tulip time, which is a different use. And we did it as a rush this last tulip time, so it'll be new coming up this time, and I'd rather not have any usage on the system prior to tulip, the couple weeks before tulip time, just to avoid creating any issues for them.
So Cindy's question or comment around like the couple weeks before, too, early once the weather gets nice and we have a number of visitors, would we be able to use the sound system? Would that be used then?
For the music, is what I'm saying, is June, June first through December.
Yeah.
So kind of that summer season through the holiday activities.
Jeanette, when will it be set up? Well, they, when do they usually set it up? Just a week or so before tulip time, or what, does it vary?
Well, previous to the new system, I think they sort of set it up four weeks in advance. With this new system, you really don't have an idea yet, because last year, they were building the system as they were setting up for tulip time. So I really have no idea how long that's going to take, or what it all entails.
And I totally get this year, if we want to kind of wait until that June to open it up. But I do think, to Mark's point, could this be a year-round, moving forward, once we kind of have a, a system, not the sound system, but a process in place?
Yeah, and we can certainly look at it. And, you know, and we're looking at using it, city staff now as well. So we'll have to see how that plays out as well.
Karen?
Can I just make a suggestion to add the east side of this square? Only that there's retail businesses there as well, that they might enjoy having a music pipe on their side too.
Council have any objections to that?
Is that a big deal to add a zone, or?
I don't know.
This is a new system, we still have to figure out.
Yeah, and I've been waiting for a decision on this before we bring the sound folks back down again to do more training and help set some of these things up. But I know in the process of getting this all set up, it's literally just supposed to be as easy as hitting a couple buttons and selecting some zones. So it should be really easy.
I think this is a good trial run period, and then we can always make adjustments after that.
Yeah, I'd like to see it be available year-round, if it makes sense.
Yeah, I don't know. In January, February, a lot of people are running from their garden there. But certainly, March and April are busy times in town, so. But we need to learn how to use it and figure it out properly, and we can try it for a year.
And I can certainly bring it back again after we know a little bit more, too, so.
Yeah. Okay, any?
Let's go with this, and can always change.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion to enter into exempt session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter twenty-one point nine to discuss employment conditions of employees not covered by collective bargaining agreements?
Spore.
Hopkins, spore. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstra?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. So are we going to go in, are we going to stay here? Okay. So we're going to go into exempt session, but there is maybe some resolutions coming out of it, so we'll invite people back in then, or? Okay. So everyone's going to have to vacate the room for a while, and before we do any votes, we'll invite people back in if you're interested. Resolution number six-six-three-five approving a policy for cost of living adjustment bonus for affected employees.
So moved.
Spore, Hopkins. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Spore?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstra?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
DeAnstra, spore. All in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeAnstra?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed.